Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I call to order our special city council workshop of August 7th. Uh, the second item on the agenda, discussion of proposed new wastewater treatment plant. This has been now limited to construction costs, engineering fees, operations and maintenance costs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
It's kinda strange, our engineering company's not here to private their...
Staff comments, Leroy, you wanna take the lead on this?
Yes, and I would guess that they will be here, but tonight I thought we were gonna concentrate on the financing of the project, not the cost estimates. So I, I thought that would be a separate item at a later date to refine the cost. Interactor comments, uh, there's clearly a lot of variables or moving parts to the wastewater treatment plant project. The total cost estimate, uh, over the last three or four years, there's been different amounts thrown out, uh, that it varied, uh, there's probably still an opportunity to do additional value engineering to reduce the cost to some degree of construction of plant. Not sure everybody was fully aware that, um, the annual operation and maintenance costs would increase with the construction of the plant, a lot had a different staff person, uh, plus we'll have additional electric cost. Tying down the available funding sources for debt service, originally it was thought that recent rate increases would be available to pay debt service, uh, but some of that revenue was lost when water customers were transferred to real water. We lost plus or minus $150,000 of revenue when that occurred, uh, going from wholesale rate on those customers, or going from retail rate to wholesale rate on those customers. The cost for the operations of the Public Works Authority has, uh, increased over the years, and the funds that we transfer from the Public Works Authority to the General Fund has an impact on how much is left in the Public Works Authority. The sheets I'm gonna hand out later, there is a CPI index built in as an annual rate increase, I don't have that in my funding scenario yet. Format of the structuring of the bond issue, uh, several moving parts in it. I, I used to term backloaded or deferred financing, virtually paying interest only for the first seven years of the debt service, uh, while you're waiting for some other big bonds to pay off to kick in, the actual, um, paying the principal. By doing that, you add about $2 million additional interest, uh, than, more than if you did a traditional straight-up loan. Um, the, the, our financial advisors wrapped in four bonds going off, uh, one, a digester loan, uh, the payoff on its 2025, and the, um, meter, automatic meter reading, uh, in the lakes and water line, it goes off in 2025, the water treatment plant in 2030, and the C-MOM, our sewer line project funds goes off in 2032. I'm a little reluctant to throw that into financing the wastewater treatment plant because those sewer lines aren't getting any younger, and I think we'll continue to need money to continue replacing sewer lines. Tight funding scenarios, uh, there's not really a margin of error factored in, which scares me a little bit. The city of Guthrie is not currently under a DEQ consent order, uh, demanding that the wastewater treatment plant be replaced by a set future date. The current discharge, uh, from our wastewater treatment plant is meeting the standards set by DEQ at present time. Our current plant permit expires in 2020, and it will need to be renewed at that time. There could be a challenge with the current facility getting the permit renewed in 2020. Also, we delay constructing the new wastewater treatment plant, the maintenance costs on the existing facility would likely increase, uh, to make such discharge stand, to meet our discharge standards. If we delay construction, interest rates and construction costs on the new plant can go up, so there's a lot of moving parts and variables to take into consideration. But what, clearly, we need to make some decision on the wastewater treatment plant, and, and I hope everybody's following, we're talking about the wastewater treatment plant, not the water plant. Because it has significant impact on other funds. If you take a portion of the funded wastewater treatment plant out of CIP, Capital Improvement Sales Tax, at 3/4%, well, it affects how much money's available to do other projects. And looking at how much we're gonna transfer from Public Works Authority to the General Fund makes a big difference in finishing up the, even the 2019 budget for next year, because we need to know how much we're gonna transfer to know how much money we have to work on. With that, those are introductory comments, I have a sheet, I've taken the engineer's cost estimate for construction and broke it up a little differently. I thought it might explain partly why we've seen different costs. If you look at that, what I've tried to do is separate it out. What I've tried to do is separate it out, if you look at just the construction cost of the wastewater treatment plant, it's about 11.7 million, that's pretty consistent with some of the numbers that have been thrown out in the past, I think at one time, former city manager indicated 10 million, of course, that's been two or three years ago. The 8 and 11, I separate that out, our current wastewater treatment facility sits on a flood plant, so you can't rebuild there, so when you relocate into the, uh, old dump or landfill, then you got to have an off-site lift station, and you gotta have an off-site pumping, I don't know in what time that that was built into the project, but that's 2.5 or almost 2.6 million, it's not tied to construction plant, it's getting the wastewater to the plant from the old plant. And so wherever you site that plant makes a difference. And then, of course, when you do a 10% contingency, that adds another 258,000 to the project for the contingency on that portion, and also, uh, the cost of issuance, uh, of the bond, 340,000 is built into this. What I tried to do is get a cost estimate for total cost. Now, we can do some value engineering, try to bring this down some, but I at least wanted to start at a point that we're, we got the total cost in here, not just pieces of it. Um, I, the engineer is gonna be here tonight, but I suggested that we do the value engineering and come back and do a second workshop on that, and concentrate tonight on the financing piece. The next sheet that I have, um...
Leroy, before you go any further, if I'm looking on the, below where it says cost efficiency in the yellow, does engineering fee paid to date and engineering fee is two separate items? So we've already paid the 488,000, we're gonna have to pay the 700,000 more for the engineering on the plant, correct?
Well, 700,000's the total in that 488,000 of that year. So that'd be the difference.
Already paid 488,000.
We're gonna know about 220,000, 218,000, right?
Correct. That's the design, now we'll have a resident engineer during construction, but that's construction engineering. This was in your package, but this, uh, there's additional electric costs for the different components of the plant, adding additional person to staff, uh, so our annual operating cost will increase approximately $300,000 a year with the new facility.
It'll increase from what we're paying now?
Correct, correct.
And there's no way to put it where the current one is, right?
It's in flood plate, so, uh, we've got to barge around it, but I don't think that we would be allowed to rebuild back in the flood plate.
Where are you looking at, over there off of the...
It's one of the cells that was not used, if I understand correctly, from the old landfill.
It's at the dump, right on Academy.
Yes, but it's, it's an area that was never used as a dump, it, uh, it was a cell that was planned, but was never utilized. And then you gotta buy right away for the, the line to bring it over, and so there's a lot of concern there to that. The next sheet I wanted to hand out is, um, some additional background information.
If you're gonna try to check, you're fat.
Waiting for the goodness.
It's at nine o'clock. In the golden color there, uh, that is the amount that has been transferred from GPWA to the General Fund, and you can see some years the General Fund was, um, substantially hurting, and in 2002, it was 613,000, I think was the highest, and then there's been some years it's in the 500,000 range. In 2013, it, it dropped to zero, and then in '14 started going back up, and in '15, '16, '17, '18, there was $350,000 transferred from the utility fees out of Public Works Authority to the General Fund to help fund the General Fund, um, and that's why we need some input or guidance from the council relative to this, to see if that 350 still will be available in '19 going forward. The, this does not include, that 350 does not include the direct charges to the Public Works Authority for staff and the city clerk utility office, uh, we fund directly out of the Public Works Authority, one purchasing agent, uh, a utility billing clerk, a accounts payable utility billing clerk, and a part-time utility clerk, so three and a half positions are funded out of the Public Works Authority, of course, billing as part of the, collecting the rates, or the fees. So I'm not indicating this is any way inappropriate, just trying to paint a clear picture of the operation, so, now, if you look at the 350,000, probably part of that is justified because city manager doesn't just manage the General Fund, city manager also manages the Public Works Authority, so it would make sense that part of my salary would come out of Public Works, part of it would come out of General Fund, we've never done cost accounting and divided it out that way, in the same way with the finance director, that should be funded out of both funds, not just out of the General Fund, so, so there's some justification for at least part of that 350,000 to go from Public Works Authority to General Fund. In the green, what I've tried to show, in 2017, we had just under $5 million in sales tax, it looks like the current budget year is gonna be, uh, almost 5.5 million, we're projecting in 2019 that we will maintain that same 10% increase, but not grow anymore. I don't know that there's been too many years this city has had back-to-back good years in sales tax, and I don't wanna get aggressive, if we can just keep the 10% that we grew this year and not backslide any, I think we would be doing good. And I hate to project we grew 10% this year, we're gonna grow another 5% next year, but if you move, if, if we deleted that 350,000 out of the FY19 budget, that would be equivalent to taking us back to 3% growth in sales tax.
Can you say that one more time?
If we take the full 350,000 and keep it in the Public Works Authority and not transfer it to the General Fund, it would be the same life, if we only got a 3% increase. So, and if you look at the way other funds fluctuate, basically, we would be saying we're gonna operate in '19 with about the same money we did in '17.
But even if we did that, that 350 grand's not gonna pay for this annual, that's gonna be the maintenance cost.
It's gonna take more.
That's just the maintenance cost of the new plant alone.
Absolutely.
Upcharge maintenance.
Absolutely.
So, we don't have a wastewater treatment plant coming, because we do...
Anyway, I just went through the different amounts and to try to give some equivalence of what it would be in impact to sales taxes. The last sheet I have is a spreadsheet on the payment plan for, um, wastewater treatment plant. And if you start on the left-hand side and go across the first, uh, the third column that says principal payment, you can see between the 2019 and 2025, which you make two payments a year, you're roughly paying 20,000 in principal, so you're, you're pretty much just paying interest only to 2025, and that's when the digester loan and the lakes and water line loan goes off, then you start making principal payments. And the further we can push our wastewater treatment plant to that 2025 date, the more resources we actually have to do a more traditional loan, but I think we gotta realize that if we decide to wait, we could end up at some point with a consent order, and we have to back up and do it whether we want to or not. The, uh, if you keep going over the interest payment, uh, over the life of this note, you would pay $8 million in interest, that's plus or minus about $2 million more interest cost because we backloaded it, and if we had paid a traditional loan, we'd be paying principal and interest all the way through. That's not a very attractive way to finance a project.
It's attractive on the short term, it's not attractive on the long term and the total package.
Yeah, well, my, when you, when you, when you borrow that kind of money, 16 million dollars, and for seven years you're just paying interest only, that's not an attractive one.
It's called robbing Peter to pay Paul, yeah. You're looking at a mill over phones.
But if you're under a consent order, you don't have any choice, then you gotta do what you gotta do.
So we save this off to for that point?
So we say that, is there no way to, on our existing plant to, uh, I don't wanna say retrofit, it's not the right word for, upgrade to meet the new standard?
It's not the new standard, can we continue with the aging of the plant and the amount of water we treat? Can we keep up with it and continue to meet the current standard? And yes, we will continue to do maintenance on the old plant to make it last as long as possible.
What is that costing us annual approximate, do you know?
On maintenance?
Yes.
I don't have that figure.
That'd be nice to know, yeah.
You can see in, as you go over the first golden column, uh, is the, uh, adding in the additional wastewater treatment plant, um, and that's just a flat amount, of course, that'll grow a little bit over time, and, um, total operation of maintenance and debt services, the salmon color or kind of reddish color, that's all of the debt itself. Then past the black line or column is the actual pay, sources to pay. And what I programmed was $4 million coming out of the CIP, and I spread it over the life, the balance of the life of, uh, the CIP sales tax. I took hypothetically reduced the transfer to General Fund, I did not reduce it in the '19 budget year, but I, I took 100,000 of the 350 out of the transfer and put it in here in 2021 budget year, with 200,000, we would reduce the transfer by 22, 300, and 23, 350, so I kinda scaled it back over time. Problem is, if we use the 350,000 this year, and we get pay raises and hire people back that we lost when we did, then we're at risk, because if the sales tax doesn't grow fast enough to replace this 350, then we're in a bind in the General Fund, and we'll have to, because once you borrow the money and use it, you can't, you can't take it back.
You made a recurrent problem.
I, so how do you feel that we can go with a reduction of 350,000 out of the General Fund?
It, it's gonna be extremely tight, uh, you know, and when I got here in '17, we reduced as many positions we could because of our, our financial position, and, um, staff was fantastic, department heads all the way down to our staff, uh, people out in the field, they picked up the slack, you know, how long can you do that? We're operating with skeleton crews in a lot of our areas, uh, it would be nice to start trying to look at how we can add some of those positions back, continue to do the merit increases, maybe look at a small cost of living increase because we want to maintain our employees, that we have quality employees. If, if we take that 350 out, that's not gonna happen.
Yeah, well, I just am curious where we're gonna cut if we take that 350 out, because it'd be pretty deep.
We'll basically be operating on the same pay level, and we'll be operating with the same number of employees, so if we take that out.
So, if we eliminate the 350,000, we stay flat as we are today?
Yeah, pretty much.
So if we put the 350,000 in, because I noticed a little comment of asking for it over here in the gold.
Yes.
So that'll come up here sooner than later, where's that gonna go?
Well, if, if we don't, if we continue to transfer it to the...
Because we've been putting it in there.
Correct. If we continue to do that, we will have a 10, a roughly 10% increase to work with next year in, um, the fire department and the General Fund. We're probably looking at, because we have some other funds that fluctuate some, we're probably looking at a 6% or 10% increase in our budget. So that'll allow us to do the merit increases, it would allow us to add some of the staff back that we cut out when we were in a budget crunch. But if we don't transfer that 350, that'll, a lot of that goes away. So I really need to know what we're gonna do before we, city clerk and I can finish the FY19 budget.
Well, before we...
And that's coming up?
Yeah. Before we get into work, we have to buy a wastewater treatment plant from a consent order, is there anybody out there, engineering or otherwise, that can tell us the probability of something like that that we have to start looking at now? I mean, obviously, it's working fine, it's doing what we need, or, or the, what, is there somebody that can say, "Well, in 2020, obviously, we gotta get a new permit," so, with what we, with, can, with, with what we have, flow rates and everything we have right now, and the effluents and everything going on, is there anybody that can give us, look into their crystal ball and tell us that, you know, are, do we need to just start buckling down now and figuring out how we're gonna come up with it, or can we just...
I don't know that anybody can give us a definitive answer to that degree, it would be nuts, but, uh, I, I've never seen DEQ, I don't know how they can give you a consent order as long as you meet the discharge standards.
Right.
Well, I mean, I was under the impression that there was a certain degree of urgency when we talked about this two years ago.
Exactly.
And...
There was, yeah.
And, and, and now I'm hearing that, um, that maybe that urgency isn't there.
Wow.
Clearly, there's some financial implications, uh, for stretching this out, and even after a consent order, you've obviously got some time to start developing your plan for meeting the new, the standards, uh, and so, you know, even if it's 2020, when we had, when we had, when we know that we're coming up for review, uh, we're probably looking at some, at a year or two after that before there's, before it's absolutely imperative, even if, in the worst-case scenario. But, again, I was under the impression personally that, that there was some urgency, and now my sense is that there isn't, and clearly...
No, we were all under that same impression, Steve.
And, and clearly, the expenditure and the financial planning aspect of it, to spend $2 million more to front-load this thing, if we can hold off for a few years, as long as we're providing a, a quality service, uh, as long as we're meeting the standard, seems to me that it's pretty obvious what we need to do.
Well, can we look, look it right in the eye and ask where the sense of urgency came from? I see a half a million dollars in engineering we paid already.
Okay.
And let me tell you something, in those meetings, engineering was a lot of the urgency, okay, in this deal, okay? They were in the, they were in the retreats, and there, there was a lot of urgency from engineering in this. We go back and look at the tapes, uh, and so what I'm looking at, a half million dollars out, that if we don't do anything, it's just, we just threw it away, that's gonna change.
I don't think so.
Well, you don't know.
I mean, the, the plan that was developed can still be the plan.
I understand.
Can still be the plan, Brian. I don't, I don't, I don't think it was...
We don't know if it'll be the same engineering company in seven years from now or not.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
It will, it will be modified.
A sense of urgency came from engineering.
But, but I do think if we're talking about the financial aspect today, uh, and, and I understand you and Kim wanting to get some sense from the council, because it does impact on how you guys plan for a budget, uh, not only the 350, but also, you know, just bumping this, this potential project down the road, and, and I don't wanna kick the can to a, to a future council, uh, because we all have been dealing with some of that.
Stuff that got kicked us.
Yeah, uh, but, uh, again, this, it doesn't sound like there's a sense of urgency, um, as long as we can keep providing a service. I don't know, Leroy, what, is there an impact on economic development in terms of new businesses coming in?
Sure there is.
That would be impactful, uh, that, that would necessitate us moving forward with a wastewater treatment plant, uh, more, more quickly?
It depends, we would have some options, but it would depend on what type of utility use the new industry would have, um, but there would be an opportunity that if we had a big user, that we could build a new treatment plant, because the revenue flow from the new industry for a big utility user would help pay.
Sure, sure.
And normally, there's a year or two lag from the time they announce to the time that they actually go into operation, so, um, it could have an impact, I can't give you a guarantee answer, but I think we would have some time to respond.
But it seems to me clearly, if we move closer to, uh, the funding mechanism for some of the other items that were going off in, uh, what did you say, 20?
25.
25. To avoid the, the $2 million of just paying interest.
And if you look at the spreadsheet I did, the last column that says variance, even if you put in $4 million from the CIP, you take the 350 from, and not transfer it to General Fund, until you get to 20, 20, 2031...
You're not even paying on principal.
You still have, you still have a negative that you're gonna have to come up out of the operating fund of the Public Works Authority, which we probably could do, but it would be tough.
We need to get our 488 grand back and figure out this another day, what we need to do, it's called a request for funds.
I'm not following your...
The engineering, okay, if you remember, that's how we got pushed so hard on this deal.
Okay, so, um, again, I know we wanted to focus on finances, but your assessment, you're comfortable with your, with staff input, you're comfortable that, um, I mean, anything can happen tomorrow, but you're comfortable that we have a reasonably working wastewater treatment plant, um, and meeting the standards as they exist today?
We have to this point.
All right.
When, when does our permit expire?
2020.
2020, so we know we're gonna have another review by then.
Yes.
And, and, and it could be okay, it could be okay.
What I would recommend is that at the retreat, when we plan the CIP...
When is that retreat?
The month, 2020.
Oh, 2020, this month. I think we ought to look at setting aside the 4 million, in case we do get consent orders, that we go ahead and start setting that aside and put it into account designated for the wastewater treatment plant. I think that we look for opportunities over the next couple of years to try to reduce the transfer from wastewater treatment plant to General Fund as much as we can, uh, but But just don't take it all away, but if an opportunity presents itself, start building some funds and maybe we can pay part of it out of cash rather than all borrow money if we get a consent order. Think we need to start planning some funding towards it, not just put it under a bucket and forget it.
Oh, I agree. Well, that's what I was thinking, if we could start putting money back, or banking money, putting it in a savings account or some sort of interest-bearing account.
Designated for this project.
Designated only for this, I guess we can do that because that are the way our budget works from year to year. We have to be careful with how we transfer, how we carry funds forward.
We can both, we can let it into a capital fund.
Well, I think that's the way to go because there's real, obviously, we can't afford one right now. I agree with that.
But if we're gonna do that, that would be done through a council ordinance, or how does that work?
We would do it as part of the budgeting process, we would transfer money. Well, of course, if it's in the CIP, we would just designate the money and it would remain in the capital improvement plan for this. If we take money out of wastewater, or we take it out of reducing the general fund, we could transfer it as part of the budget process in the CIP where it will be designated for this, so it can be done as part of the budgeting process.
So what about, so that we don't saddle future councils? What if we do it as a council and it's a mandate that X amount of money per month, just like in a rainy day fund, goes in this capital improvement fund?
I'd rather not lock in an amount, I'd like to try to do it budget year by budget.
I think that's where we get off track, not because of you, but that's where we get off track, when we don't lock in an amount.
Maybe let's get through the nineteen, the next budget, the nineteen budget we're working on, see where it is, and maybe we'll have a better ideal of an amount that we could set. If that's...
I mean, just, just considering one thing, we've been transferring approximately three hundred and fifty thousand. All right. And yet, we're saying with this brand-new facility, our, our operational expenses are gonna go up three hundred and five thousand.
I know, that's all it might be.
It just went.
Exactly.
It just went. So I, I hear what you're saying, and I'm in favor of not saddling future, but that, that scenario changes, because that three hundred and fifty is now just eaten.
Well, but we don't have the number that it's costing to maintain our current facility. And if we add that, that'd be good conversation right there.
We are putting a hundred and five thousand every year into the rainy day fund. It's at six hundred thousand. Four years from now, we'll be done building the public, general fund's rainy day fund is fully funded.
That's okay.
But the loan for Public Works Authority is at about six hundred thousand.
Correct.
It's close to it, yeah.
So, so we've got about four more years of a hundred thousand each year going to that, to fund that. About a hundred thousand within...
I'm just willing to bet, if a council doesn't make a mandate about this deal, it's not gonna happen. And it won't, we'd be sitting here with another council down the road, and there's not gonna be any money for it.
Why don't, why don't we do that as, as we finish up the nineteen budget and see where we're at, and then we can talk about a mandate?
But I think philosophically, what I am hearing is that we would like to take the three hundred and fifty or a portion thereof and put it in a savings account.
Well, it's gonna be, have to be a lot more than that.
Yeah, right. But, but, but like, put that money into a separate account that isn't going into our general fund.
Right.
And be weaning off that money going to the general fund so that we know we're gonna have to replace the wastewater treatment plant at some point.
Exactly.
And so that, and when that point happens, whether it's two years from now in twenty, or in twenty-four, there is, there is...
Or thirty.
There's a lump sum, there's a lump sum to build on that we're not hamstring a, a, a future...
Exactly.
City council.
Correct.
That's what I'm hearing philosophically, at least from this end of the table. We're not hearing so much from that end.
Josh just come right in chat.
Yeah, I'll front check.
But is that, is that generally what we're, what we're all thinking? I mean, again, the message that's coming to us, me, is, is different. The urgency is not there, there's more thought into the financial, and clearly, spending three million dollars or whatever it was in, in, in interest is, is just not smart. It's not smart personally, it's not smart for us in charge of public, public funds, it's not smart for the city.
Well, our plans at the age, it would make rational sense to replace it. But if you don't have the dollars to pay for it, you got to make it work. It's just like having an old car, you know, at some point, you need a new one, but if you don't even have the down payment for it, you don't make the old car work a little longer.
What if we, let me, let me ask one more question on this. What if we looked at the, our current CIP, how much we brought in, how much we put out on special projects, stopped it right in its tracks? I'm not suggesting this, I'm just saying, stopped it dead in its tracks, didn't spend another dime on anything other than a wastewater treatment plant, could we fund it? Through the CIP?
I don't think so.
Well...
I think so.
You've spent, you probably have, pretty close.
You could fund the sixteen million out of the CIP, you didn't spend another dime on anything.
Because you could pay for everything out of that until these other loans went off.
Now, let's be clear, that's not what the people bargained for when they brought in the CIP. We all know that. So that's why, that's why I'm saying, if we're gonna put a fund together and commit to that so that we don't saddle future councils and try to make a jump here, a couple of things need to happen. We need to never spend a half a million dollars to an engineering company or anybody else when we don't know that we're gonna do the project.
And that's all it does. It's gonna be a long fall and we're not gonna prepare.
That is fair.
We know that at some point in time...
They might not be around when we're gonna do it, Steve.
Wait a minute.
Well, I wasn't actually done.
We know that at some point in time, we're gonna have to replace the wastewater treatment plant.
Exactly, and they may not be around in twenty thirty.
And we'll pry up...
Okay? And we'll have to redo the engineering of four hundred and eighty-eight we spent. That's where the urgency came from.
That might have to be replaced.
Engineering expires.
That's where the engineering, that's where the urgency came from.
If we went back in three years, they'd want it all...
Okay, and so, I'm just saying, we don't ever need to do that again, is what I'm saying.
Well, we gotta be smart to do push that, Leroy. Well, when we do, when we're...
I feel like we've been sold a bag of goods on the wastewater treatment plant.
We had to do this, and we brought it in and said, because if you don't do this, it's not gonna work. So, yeah, okay, we get the engineering going on it, and now we're not gonna use it. So a half a million dollars later, and we're not gonna do it. Now, five, six, seven years from now, when we do do it, we'll be...
That engineering will be good.
It won't be any good.
And on top of that, I'm not saying anything, I'm not saying, you know, we're never gonna get the four hundred and eighty-eight back. All I'm saying is if we're gonna commit to future councils in this community that we're gonna put money back, then we need to commit it through council and not leave it up to staff. It needs to be a committed ordinance that the money goes in, period. You don't get to play unless we pay for this thing.
Well, I think we approve.
How many subscribers do we have?
We did approve it.
Do you know, roughly?
It's about thirty, between thirty-seven, thirty-eight hundred.
Okay. How long did they say this plant should last? Did they ever say that?
Oh...
We can go back through the tapes, listen to all the dog and pony show.
They did, I don't recall, but it was a fairly substantial, it's a fairly substantial life.
I'll be, I'll be fifty-two whenever this was paid off.
But I, to be honest with you, I never heard any conversation about, about the, about being in the floodplain.
Oh, you know that the...
I may have just totally missed that.
No, we always knew it was gonna be in.
Because it's somewhere on river.
Okay, I, I guess I just missed...
Part of the engineering was finding another side of the work.
And it could have been part of, and to say engineering had a hundred percent responsibility to not push this down our throat as an emergency, it was probably staff at the time as well. Let's give it some fairness here.
That's more fair.
That's, that's more fair. Okay, but, you know...
If you remember, if you remember back when this all started, right, the scare tactic was out there that if we don't take care of this, we're gonna get fined millions of dollars.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. We're gonna get the same, same like on a water thing.
For the urgency came from that thing.
Well, it came through multiple meetings and everything else we had.
When I came here in two seven, two thousand and seventeen, I was told Sidney Guthrie was ready to build a wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah.
And I said that I hadn't been here long enough so that I understood where the money was gonna come to pay for.
Right.
And so, I'd been dragging my feet until we had time to go through. First budget cycle I went through in two thousand and seventeen, we were in a panic mode trying to figure out how to keep it flowing. But now, this year, I've had time to go through this, and I didn't want to run out and borrow sixteen million dollars until I could do a spreadsheet and see where the revenue sources was coming from.
One thing I'd like to say, Leroy, is the urgency for our plant is there, guys. And, I mean, if you haven't been out there, come visit, our holding ponds are full. We have two holding ponds, they're full, trees growing in probably two, three-inch diameter base right now. When them holding ponds are not full, we have the ability to take the overflow to the holding pond. We don't have that ability right now.
So what happens to the overflow?
We're treating every max, I mean, everything that's coming in, we're treating going out.
So you're functioning like a cottonwood or something?
Flood circumstances, we don't have no place to go with it.
So you're running a hundred percent capacity right now?
If we are not able to treat it and get it out there, it's gonna come, it's gonna come out the front door. We don't have the holding ponds to go to, to, with the sewage.
So you're at a hundred percent capacity right now?
On low days.
Yeah.
Rainy days, on dry days, we're...
What about more holding ponds, we can't do that?
There's no space in the, the dikes to put them even.
Can we make them weaker?
That'd be part of the maintenance part, they'd have to go in, and they'd have to dig them out. We'd have to dig them out. I mean, that's gonna, whether they put a new plant in or not, they're gonna have to dig them out. Our, our trickle-in filters, they've been repaired multiple times, there's cracks up and down through them that, I mean, you can stick your hand in.
Does no plumber Sidney pump theirs in?
We can have the sides of them.
They can boil water in the cottonwood.
I was gonna say, pumping into the cottonwood, we can't do something like that, something similar?
So, so the urgency of our plant is there, and, I mean, twenty twenty, when our DEQ...
So if it's legitimate, nobody's bull's hook up?
Yes. It's gonna be real interesting in twenty twenty, I'm afraid, whenever DEQ comes in.
So you're, you're, if you are a betting person, you would say we would probably have some type of consent order on review?
I would say more than likely, yes.
Okay, well, then now we're back to, if we, if we do this, we can't do anything else. You know, that's not what started this whole thing.
We go out and borrow sixteen million dollars.
You can't go borrow the money, send a note, you're gonna saddle the next fifty years on a water treatment plant that's seen its life?
But, but we can move it down, but we can, but we can move it down to twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one.
That's, but that's if we do it now. And how many times are they gonna give us a variance on a consent order?
I think if we were saving up, whenever they came out, look, if we at least had it in the budget setting aside.
Well, and we already got a plan...
Yeah.
In place.
Correct.
Obviously, it will have to be massaged.
We're already paid one, aren't we, Steve?
Uh, but...
Well, so, here's what I hear, we've got a sense of urgency, but we're not, we don't have a sense of urgency. We got a sense of urgency, but yet we don't have a sense of urgency. Because, and this is what I'm concerned about with committing to put money in this fund, that we're not gonna make a, but council makes a law that that happens because, you know, we don't need it this month because we did, we just don't have the funds to do it, we're gonna have to do something else. You know, it needs to be done each and every month if we're gonna do it. And then that way, by twenty twenty, we come in and maybe we have a couple million in the bank to help offset this deal some, if we get force to do it. I don't know why we can't dig another hole, there's just no more land, it's a floodplain.
Inside the dike.
It's inside the dike.
You only got so much land area.
But we can't expand the dike?
That'd be pretty costly, yeah. You're, you're talking a lot of money there.
What kind of money are we talking, are we talking sixteen million? You know, and how much, how much maintenance?
Engineering, you're probably talking...
We'd have to, we'd have to pay the engineers some more, but he can figure it out for us.
What would that, how would that roll up be of the principal payment that's between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-six? About one point one million?
Probably.
So if we had that, we'd be a little bit better off on the interest or the traditional level?
Yeah, because the way it stands right now, we're paying one, two, three, four, seven, eight, ten, eleven years of straight interest before we have principal. We're doing it. It's insane.
We don't have a choice.
But, I'm sorry.
You're gonna have a mill...
Kick, kick can down the road too long.
At, at, at some point.
We're gonna have to do that.
But we're still kicking the can down the road if we're paying ten thousand or...
We're gonna have to do a...
So what if council, what if councils...
I just don't think we're ready to do it now.
This year, obviously not.
What if council said, we're doing the wastewater treatment plant figured out?
What are we gonna do?
And plus, we're doing, still doing the CIP projects. What do we do then?
Mr. Aubrey, it was nice to have you.
Who else, who else?
I just go over other room, I mean...
So everybody's gone.
We would have to, we would have to...
Chris, what's your... Come on, man.
We, we would have to continue to operate with skeleton crews and we would have to be very tight on pay raises, those kind of things. I mean, if push comes shove, we had to do it, I mean, we'd figure it out, but, you know... The parks gonna be mowed as much as we would like, I mean...
I think what council needs...
We're trying to grow the city through economic development, we've got to...
That was one of the reasons for increasing, for doing the new plant. But I would like to have another, we got Tenny's opinion that we gotta have it, and I trust that. Okay, and then, we got staff's opinion that everything's flowing to capacity, because it is, and I trust that.
Yes.
Okay, but I want another opinion before council makes a decision on if we have to mandate this or not. Because if we get another opinion come in and they say, yeah, Tenny's absolutely right, at the end of the day, if you don't do this, you're screwed.
What I said, who can we touch, who can we, who would, who would have, who would, who is somebody that has the crystal ball that understands this that would say, yeah, maybe so, or, yeah, maybe not?
Yeah, the engineers.
Yeah, well...
But I was just thinking.
DEQ, let's have them look, let's get the lion right in front of the...
You don't want that bad, man.
Hey, so, you know what? Hey, let me tell you... Hey, in business, sometimes the proactive one wins, okay? Sometimes being reactive, you're a loser.
Imagine what that's like.
Well, and I think, I think twenty twenty, when they do come in to do their, they do an inspection every year. When they come in for, we renew, go to renew our permit in twenty twenty, they're gonna tell us then whether or not. And if we can start now, somehow, some way, making a direction towards it, which we kind of have, I mean, we've got full plans put together for a new plant, we've got, I mean...
Can we break ground with internal employees and start breaking ground over here at the other place to get it start getting ready? I don't know if we've gotten to that discussion yet.
I don't, I don't know why we want to, want to rush that, Brian. I mean, I, I, in, in my mind, I'm thinking that we ought to be strategically planning to make those moves in twenty, twenty twenty-one, something like that. But we need to be looking at how do we find, put ourselves financially, in a financial position now for twenty twenty-one and beyond. I think the closer we get to twenty twenty-six, when some of these other things go off the books, that's, that, the better off we are, without paying more in, in, in interest. But we need to be putting money in our savings account for that date.
All right, so how much money do you...
I think what Brian was saying a minute ago, I kinda agree with you, though. The, the, the point in do having our guys go out and start groundwork or whatever, shows due diligence, just like putting the money does, it shows due diligence. So if the department, if DEQ comes in...
That shows big diligence.
If DEQ comes in, not only are we starting to save money, we've already broke ground on this project, we look pretty good. That's why...
If we're just sitting here building, building parks and stuff, they're gonna look at us and go, you know what? Ten thousand dollars a month, or whatever they find.
We've spent, we've spent money, engineering, I mean...
I'm just saying, you know, I don't wanna, I got another opinion.
I guess I would...
We're not qualified to make it.
I guess I'm saying, we need to prepare ourselves for that date because we know it's coming. I'd just like to push that date down the road, two or three, three, three or four years, but be putting money away for that, just like you do your own personal.
I understand, Stephen, do you think we are qualified to make that call? Without having another person come in? I'm hearing Tenny say, we're at flood, we're at the top level, we've got trees growing in it.
I, I, I guess I would, my gut feeling would be that any engineering firm is gonna come in and they're gonna be very conservative, and they're gonna say, you need to start getting ready to replace it.
They're not talking about an engineering firm, I don't know who we're talking about.
Well, or whoever, whoever the, whoever the professional expert is gonna be.
And I don't know who that is.
It's gonna, it's gonna err on the, it's gonna err on the conservative side. I don't think we're gonna get a different message. I think the message is gonna be, you need to replace it? you need to replace it and you start planning to, to make it happen, and I think that's not a bad message, I'm just saying, I think, I think the point ought to be twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, something like that.
Starting to put money back, putting money back for it is, is a good start, that, that needs to be done where we can come up with the money, how much money.
That needs to be done regardless.
After we, after we see the, the, the twenty nineteen budget, obviously, we're gonna have to wait to go through that and go through the retreat to see where we can stand and what we have going forward, that, as we in government, things move slow, so we need to know where the money's coming from next year, and if we can put it back, that's the way to do it, because I give them the near, year after that is when they're gonna come down on our head, you might as well look at it, it's not gonna be free.
And, and before we went to retreat and before we did the budget, I just thought, you all need to have this information so that it's fresh on your mind as we go through this.
Well, I mean, it's the elephant in the room, it, it impacts everything that we, that we make recommendations or plans for, for CIP, I mean, this is the elephant.
So we obviously agreed, we as a council voted to pay four hundred and eighty-eight thousand in engineering, because we already agreed we were doing a wastewater treatment plant, or we would have never paid a damn dime towards engineering, not one penny.
Well, I think we are doing it.
Okay, or not, you wanna kick it down the road to some other council?
We are going to do it, it's the timing of it.
Exactly, well, the timing of it, we need to, we need to figure out that that might be now, okay, it may not be, but it may be, and it's, at least it's now to start putting a bunch of cash back for it, a bunch of cash back for it, which might mean no raises or any of that, and it really may, because at the end of the day, we do have an elephant coming and he's stomping towards us, okay?
Are we helping you at all in your financial question that you, that was the purpose of this?
I don't think we got a consensus yet.
Well.
Is it already against on the cost that we can in-house for labor? Or is that at Myers and Tenny set down in the future?
I don't think that we want to try to start construction of this thing in-house at this point, I think that the biggest thing we can do at this point is start setting aside funds, like how much are we gonna take out of the CIP and how we get towards this? How much can we cut back what we transferred to the general fund?
How much of the three fifty?
Correct, those are things we can do now that even if they come in twenty twenty and say you have to do one, we're not gonna be any worse than we are today, we'll be in a better shape because we've sent some money back and that will be available cash. Today, there is no cash.
Well, I think that, I don't think that we can, from my personal vote, I don't think we can just say the three fifty is no longer gonna go to general fund, it's gonna all go to this other special, but I do think that we need to be putting up together some kind of a plan that says that, that we're gonna, we're gonna be cutting that number, we're gonna be reducing that number, and whether we reduce it to, to two hundred next year and then a hundred the following year, whatever, but I, I think we need to have a slope there, I don't think we can just say.
One way would be to tie it to sales tax growth, and if sales tax grows, not absorb all that sales tax into operating the general fund, but a certain percentage of sales tax growth every year goes to weaning us from the money that we take out of the general fund, and it's tied to the actual growth, so if you grow five percent, you put two percent home back, you grow seven percent, you put some kind of sliding scale where you tie it to actual sales tax growth would probably be the best way to do it.
But three fifty, three hundred and fifty thousand a year is not anywhere near enough anyway, it's nowhere near, I mean, we're just gonna have, if you're talking two years down, three years down the road, you got, you know, one point one million in there, that's it, okay, we need to have like seven or eight.
Well, I don't know, I think we need to have the finance people to tell me that, I don't know that, Brian, that, that seems like a lot, fifty percent of your, of your thing having it.
Just some math we think about, that's a lot. Just you did like subscribe, it's like three hundred and fifty dollars per year.
Well, it just, it's just, all I'm saying is that if you got eleven years over here on this financing where it never even starts hitting principal.
I'm not defending that, I'm not defending that.
That's all.
I'm saying we need to get that, we need to move that down, we, and we have four minutes.
Defense somewhat of the engineers, Mayor, when you go to DEQ and if they, I won't be here in twenty twenty, so, when they show up and say, you, you gotta do something, if they start, I guess we're the only ones that ever went through the consent order process that are still around, having those plans in hand.
Help.
Will help a lot.
Oh, yeah, heck yes.
In deferring penalties, because DEQ now, they've been cut back, you know this, so much in their funding from the state, that they look for fines to fund their efforts. And that's, and we got fined on that, but we got a lot of the fines waived, because we made an effort, we passed a, a thing. But here, where you've already spent the money and you've got plans in hand, that's
Plans in hand, and some money.
We are doing something and now we've got a mistake also.
I think that's a good, I think that's a good strategy.
Well, that's, it's a start.
So.
We will work towards that strategy and incorporate it into our plan for the FY nineteen budget, when we have the retreat and we talk about the nineteen million dollars available in CIP, I hope we leave that day and we've allocated all that money and how we're gonna use it and a piece of that needs to be allocated toward this plant.
Well, that's the whole duration of the fifteen years.
Correct.
The nineteen million.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know how we can allocate that on August twenty-fourth.
I don't know that we can do that either.
That's kinda crazy, honestly, then.
You're not gonna allocate, you're not gonna, I mean, you've got probably enough list to spend that nineteen million dollars three times, so are you gonna decide each year how to use that money, or are you gonna plan for the future?
Well, I think things change, and I think that it needs to, yeah, there needs to be either, maybe it's a five-year plan, maybe it's a two-year, maybe it's a three-year, or whatever it is, but, I mean, let's face it, if we were to put out another, every, when you throw the CIP list out on the table right here right now, everybody in here's gonna interpret it different, okay, to a degree.
And, and I get more nuts on my head over that than anything else.
And I understand, so if we.
Have a plan.
So, a very smart man at one point told me, I won't mention his name because he'll get embarrassed and he's probably watching right now, that, why don't we reset that list out, why don't we poll again, and let's see what today looks like, because you know what, two years, three years ago was different than we are today, and it is, what, what if they all came back and said, forget everything, we want the wastewater treatment plant done? I'm just saying, I wouldn't think it would, and it wouldn't probably come back, but you don't know what's gonna come back, because things change, how can we commit fifteen years of a council down the road? I can't do that, I don't know, maybe you guys can.
Twenty-eight years, almost.
Yeah, whatever, no, talk about the CIP.
But we do have, but we do need to have a strategic plan with some kind of prioritization, yet flexibility, because things do change.
I agree.
But I, I think we can all agree, we've said it a couple of times, that the, the elephant in the room is this sucker we're talking about.
Hey, Tom.
And we gotta figure out how we wanna deal with that first, and I think that's what Leroy's saying, and it relates, the three fifty, along, along with other things,